Do the roll call for us?
Yes. President Diana Dumbriz.
President.
Michael Lancioni.
Here.
Pam Dube, I know she's absent. Mike Lancioni.
He just called me.
Mike Martinez.
Did I call Lancioni the first time?
He did, yes.
Okay, let's try. Both of you were here, right?
Yep, yes.
Okay, that helps. Rich Young, I know you're here. I'm here. Attorney Laura Nuremberg.
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix. Yes, he's absent, don't hear anything. Police Chief Bob Sokowski.
Mark Swistek present.
Bob Sokowski.
No, no, not Sokowski, Mark Swistek.
Yeah, Mark Swistek is the new Long Beach Police Chief. He is present.
Okay, he is present, yes, thank you.
That's not what's on my agenda.
Yeah, that's the old agenda that I printed out, yes. Sorry about that. I put that together Friday. Bob was still the police chief.
S-W-I-S-T-E-K.
T-E-K. Correct, Mark?
Mark, how do you spell your name?
It's M-A-R-K and then last name S-W-I-S-T-E-K.
T-E-K, thank you.
You're welcome.
Park Board President Dolly Millick. She's absent, okay, got that. Matt Bowen, he's absent, he never comes. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas.
Present.
Okay. Ray Dumbriz, I heard he's here.
Present.
Okay, and then the Plan Commission President Howard Javon.
He's absent.
Okay, and Code Enforcement Deb Chubb.
Yeah.
Okay. Website Samantha Arnold.
Well, she will try to join us.
Okay, but she's not here yet.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, is Pam on the call?
No, Pam's not on the call.
Okay.
I don't think we, we just tried to talk her into doing it, she's not available right now, so. Okay. So the next thing is...
Thank you. Okay, Joan, thank you very much. I'm going again, I'm sorry?
I said, "You're welcome."
Okay, I'm going to hand the meeting over to Joan for the next few minutes because Joan must run the election of Council President and Vice President for the year 2021, so Joan, it's yours.
Let's go back a step, I understand the President appoints the Vice President. Did we change something?
No, I think what we did last year was that we nominated one and the other one, and that was it, so. That's what we did last year.
Okay. I'll open the floor for nominations for President.
I'll nominate Diana Dumbriz for President.
Okay, which, which Michael is this? Is this Mike or Michael?
This is Mike Lancioni.
Thank you.
Joan, I second that nomination, this is Martinez, Michael Martinez.
Okay. Is there any other nominations from the floor? Any other nominations?
Doesn't look like no.
Pardon? Okay, hearing none. Vote on it, but it sounds like it's already done. But we will vote on it. State your name, nay or aye. When you're voting, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Diana Dumbriz?
Aye.
Rich Young? Rich, are you still with us?
Rich, you're muted.
Rich? Somebody wake him up. Rich?
I don't have him muted, so Rich is muted on his own. What do you press in order to unmute when you're on the phone?
Star six.
Star six.
Star six. Rich, do you hear that?
I hear you.
Okay, great.
Okay, Rich, did you hear what we did?
Yeah, aye. I whatever.
Okay. Vice President, well, it looks like Diana has it, four ayes and one absent. For Vice President, nominations for Vice President?
This is Mike Lancioni, I'll nominate Michael Martinez.
Okay.
This is Diana speaking, I will second.
Okay. There's any other nominations for Vice Presidents from the floor? None? Any?
None.
None, no one, okay. Let's take a vote. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Okay, Diana Dumbriz?
Aye.
And Rich Young?
Aye.
Okay, four ayes, the ayes have it, Mike, it's yours. That's it.
All right, thank you very much, Joan, and thank you very much for those who nominated us and that you trust us to continue working as well as we can for the Town of Michiana Shores. I move on directly into the adoption of the meeting agenda. Everyone received an agenda last week on Friday. I did not get much at all in any additions or fractions, like everybody to take a quick look now, or unless you have looked at something and you feel that we need to add or delete something from our agenda for this month's meeting. Okay, I don't hear anything, so I need a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
No motion.
Okay. Michael Martinez moved, and Rich?
I'll second.
You'll second, okay, thank you, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Diana Dumbriz, aye. Okay, the agenda has been approved. Minutes.
Did I miss, excuse me, I think I missed something, did someone make a motion to keep the meeting agenda, or did you just vote on it?
No, we, they, they made a motion to keep the agenda.
Who was, who made the motion and who seconded?
Michael Martinez moved, Rich Young seconded.
Thank you.
Yes?
Diana, that was Mike Lancioni.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael Lancioni, my fault, I thought, I wrote down your name.
I was gonna, I was gonna let you have it, Michael, it's okay.
It don't make any difference, come on, guys.
I swore I thought I heard Michael Martinez's...
Three ayes have it, that's all that matters. You had four ayes, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes of the December 29th meeting. Joan provided those to us the other day, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Come on, I put a lot of work in, I mean, can't find a mistake.
I'm waiting for Rich to comment.
Rich wasn't at the meeting.
I don't have a copy.
Yeah, I think I missed, I took it out of your pack for some reason, don't ask me why I did that, because I have no reason. I'll have a copy for you later, so you can read what happened, how'll that be?
All right.
There possibly isn't any typos or whatever in it, I went over it so many times.
Okay, well then in that case, I need someone to make a motion to accept the minute as written?
Martinez makes a motion to accept the minute as written.
Thank you. I need a second? Okay, I will make a second to accept the minutes as read. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mike Lancioni?
Aye.
Mike, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Well, I don't have a copy, so I just take you guys' word for it, aye.
Okay, thank you, and Diana Dumbriz, aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, let us move on to our report from Committees, Officers, Clerk, Treasurer. In this section, we have our Clerk Treasurer providing us with the invoice vouchers, and then we are also going to discuss the police contract. I put the police contract just as B because I usually have the vouchers first, but in essence, so that if you want, we can start out with the Police Chief instead. So, you know, it's up to, to what you want to do.
Let's do the Police Chief for Police Protection first, we don't need to take up more, Mark's time is needed.
Okay, thank you very much, good suggestion, all right. So, Michael, I'm gonna pass this over to you since you are, you know, leading our search for the Police Protection Services. Go ahead.
Yes, absolutely. Well, first and foremost, congratulations Police Chief Swistek on the, on the new job and position, looking forward to working with you. I wanted to ask, as we did go ahead and review the contract that was submitted to us, in terms of who and who is responsible for generating this contract, does this fall on the Town Council, or who actually created the contract that was submitted to the Town of Michiana Shores, do you know?
That would be correct, it is the Town Council with the review of the Town Attorney, Chris Willoughby, and then with input from former Chief Robert Sokowski.
Got it, and just for clarification, for the month of January, has the Town Council already met in a fit town of Long Beach?
Yes, we met last night at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Michael, there is a special meeting coming up, I think in two weeks, we have a special meeting that's coming up, so I don't know if I can still get anything on that agenda, if you need something on there, but they do have a special meeting coming up before the February meeting.
Perfect, thank you, and that's two weeks from today, from today's date, or just you go offhand?
Um, I'll have to, let me get on the website here, and I can maybe find out for you if that's been posted today.
Got it, okay, and the reason I ask Police Chief, Police Chief Swistek, is because, you know, we were able to review the contract, you know, it's pretty standard, I didn't see any, anything that was outstanding, or anything that had questions from the 2018 contract, but as you know, just with everything that's going on, we did see an increase, I want to say, I just did the quick math real quick, and correct me, guys, if you guys see differently, but about around a 9% increase from the 2018 contract that we signed with the Town of Long Beach till now, for the one that's in front of us for 2021 and the next three years. So what we wanted to ask, or at least let me be the voice for the Town Council in reviewing this, is that if we would be able to have the Town of Long Beach honor the same 2018 rates that you guys submitted to us back at that time for the 2021 contract that lasts three years, so hopefully I was clear on that, is just looking to stay at the same rate that we signed on at 2018. So that's the feedback that I have, again, it looks like the services pretty much stayed the same, the responsibilities stayed the same within the contract, but just with, you know, again, just with the economy, the way that it is, based on everything that we cannot control, we were looking for some type of alleviation of this responsibility for the increase in wages or the increase in costs that the Town of Long Beach Police Department was asking for. So I wanted to stop right there.
Sure.
Michael?
Yes, Joan?
Actually, interrupt, 3% each year is more than 9% over the contract that we have for this year, because that's a compounded interest, compo, it's like compounded interest. We're paying 9%, I mean, 3% on a 3% this year. Next year, it's, it's gonna be more, because next year we'll be paying on this 3%.
Right.
Again, we'll pay 3% on that 3%.
So what I was saying was comparing the 2018 first year at $53,556, now comparing that with our first year for the 2021 proposed contract at $58,524, that was simply a 9.2% increase, so I was just comparing the first year of the 2018 contract and the first year of the 2021 contract.
Quite a bit of difference.
Right, so that's kind of, just want to clarify, thanks for bringing that up, and hopefully that clarified where my increases came, so Police Chief Swistek, I think you had a comment as well?
Yes, if I may, I will share with you that the Town Council has approved, and I personally delivered the contract to the Dumas Beach Association, where we signed a three-year contract with them, and each year was a 3% increase, so starting in 2021. I think it was the Town's intent to also have a 3% increase for each year moving forward with the Town of Michiana as well. I would suggest Diana maybe reaching out to Dr. Lemay, the President of our Board, and sharing those concerns with him, because obviously this is a Town Council question that he's...
Right.
You too. Keep going, Michael.
So, yeah, with, again, the other reason we say that is because, for one, just to give you a little background, is that, you know, we were doing our due diligence as a town to kind of see exactly what other services were out there, so we were still working with the Michigan City Police Department, but, you know, fortunately, that Long Beach was the first to submit their actual contract, proposed contract, so that's why we wanted to kind of take this back as soon as possible, with the understanding that, you know, our contract, maybe as well as Dumas', is that expires at the end of this month, maybe first. So, you know, again, anything that we can do, I think we have to take this back, or at least talk with the President of Dumas Beach to kind of work things out, but it sounds like in two weeks that you guys would have a special meeting to possibly look at an adjusted rate, is that how I understand it?
I just pulled up that special meeting, it is on January 13th at 7:00 PM, and they haven't listened.
Wow.
Yeah, that's actually, okay, right, that's for the storm water management one, and then I believe there's going to be another one, possibly two weeks after that, I'm not so certain on that, I know there's discussion about that, but again, Dr. Lemay could answer that with certainty.
Okay.
Michael, if I may, if I could speak a little bit about Michigan City Services compared to what Long Beach could provide for maybe a second?
Please.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. What was yours?
So, so obviously, having 29 years' experience at the Michigan City Police Department, and being the former Police Chief there, I'm very familiar with our district assignments, personnel assignments. The Michigan City Police Department patrols six patrol districts. The district closest to the Town of Michiana Shores would be our District 6 car. Our District 6 car covers from Risky Ave on Michigan Boulevard, all the way out to Near Road, past the airport, covers all of Highway 212, and then all of Carwick Road, all the way to Long Beach Borders, and then over to Michiana. I can tell you, as I sit in the office right now, we, the Long Beach Police Department, are currently going into Michigan City at this very moment to assist them on a domestic call, because they're overwhelmed with calls for service right now, tonight. The Town of Long Beach, we are very fortunate not to have the call volume that the City of Michigan City experiences on a nightly basis, so I can tell you with an assurance that the Long Beach Police Department, which is in such close proximity to the Town of Michiana, that our staff would be patrolling Michiana more frequently than the City of Michigan City, because I just know from my history of Michigan City, especially on the afternoon and midnight shift in a hot summer night, between the unfortunate shootings and domestics and fights and progress that they handle, typically the District 6 car is pulled into the inner city to assist the other five districts, which would leave your town uncovered on those hot summer nights, where Long Beach would be there for you more frequently and more available to assist with, you know, coverage of the town. Obviously, being new to the Town of Long Beach, I'm very familiar with, you know, Long Beach, Dumas, and Michiana, having been a law enforcement professional in La Porte County for the past 29 years, I can only assure you that the Town of Long Beach would probably give you most certainly the most coverage compared to any other law enforcement agencies surrounding the town.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Joan.
Are we going to know how many times we're going to have police patrol? It's been pretty decent the last six months. It seems like every time a contract comes up, we get service here, as far as circulating the town and having police in sight, you know, where people can see them. If we can have what we've had the last six months, then I can agree that you would be giving us more, but if it's like the other contracts we've signed, I've been associated with the town for almost 15 years, dealing with the town, and living here for 35. And we used to have, we used to see police cars all the time, they would be circulating, but the last couple contracts, we've not been seeing them like we should. I don't know if it's a shortage of staff, we never did get a record of how many, how many times they circulate, which days they circulated, we don't have to know when they're gonna do it, we'd like to know when they did it in our monthly reports, so if you're in the Town of Michiana Shores, and you're here twice today, and that would be nice to know on our reports, that's what we're getting. And like I said, the last six months, it's been decent. Well, I see the police cars, I see them over by our Town Hall, but we didn't get that previously, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Any other comments? Michael, keep going.
Yeah, I kind of want to comment, Joan, because I don't want to be the dead horse here, is, you know, yeah, it's a 3%, 3% increase for this contract, it's pretty standard, as it was in 2018. I mean, are you saying, and tell me if you guys agree with Joan, is it the presence, is it the value of what we're paying versus what we're getting, or what we had up to this point, that's the issue?
That's, that's the main, that's the part, that's the main part.
And the reason I ask that, again, this is not directed just to Joan, but to other Town Council, is that I thought that we had in place, from conversations that Diana had with attending the Long Beach Town Council, that there were opportunities for fellow members to join certain boards, or to at least have a voice in any concern, any future concern, if we didn't see a police presence, or at least a platform to, you know, identify any opportunities that we saw moving forward, I mean, is that still up there, or?
Why don't we go with a one-year contract, to see what kind of service they're gonna provide us, since we know what their past record has not been that good? I'm looking out for finances of the town, being the Clerk Treasurer.
And you know Joan has voice too, what about Diana or Mike? Any comment, we're just looking, want to kind of give your feedback as well?
If, you know, I can just pop in here right now, I did hear from Bill Zupuniac this afternoon, and I'm sorry, he just sent me a short little email that said that we would not be able to be on the Police Advisory Board because, I guess, the Town's, you know, ordinances, in other words, we are, we are restricted from being on that because we are not Long Beach Town residents. The suggestion was that we sit down and we speak with Chief, you know, Swistek about any kind of concerns we have now, to make sure that these things are addressed, and then perhaps even have meetings going forward to make sure that things are, you know, done the way that, you know, we as a town would like. Now, I, I agree with Joan that we, I think we should approach the Town of Long Beach to see if we could have a, you know, a, perhaps a smaller amount of money, because we are getting so much less in tax monies that we can use for all the various things that we need, so I think that's very much worthwhile. To pop on top of what Joan had said, I as well have felt that we don't have as many patrols that go through, except since we had, unfortunately, we had a couple of incidents of theft, and one of which actually, you know, had to do with Michael Martinez having some property stolen from his home, and after them, that, we had a lot of police that seemed to be here often, and before then, literally, it would go, you know, days where you wouldn't see anybody driving by or sitting anywhere, so that's a concern, and residents do ask about that, I asked about that, and residents do make comments about that, so we would just like to be, you know, sort of assured, as the others have said, that the patrols are really being made. It's not like, oh yeah, we went through town, okay, well, what does that mean, did you go once at 2:00 in the morning, you know, or was there anybody around during the day? So, that's, that's important, you know, point for all of us. I think one of, one of the other issues that, you know, had come up as well is, is the issue, and I guess we could talk about, you did respond to Chief with regards to the ordinances, and I did send that email out to all the Council members, so that they would take a look at what it said there, but we would have a problem with regards to ordinance, only in the sense that the Chief would just come right out and say, even though the contract says to enforce our town ordinances, I'm not gonna enforce that ordinance. Well, you know, that's, that becomes a very big issue for us, okay, I mean, if, if we really need it enforced, and I can't give an example right now, but, you know, that was his comment, that he had made even at a meeting, he goes, "I'm not gonna enforce" some of those, whatever ordinance, at the time, so, so that would be, that's a concern, definitely for us, you know, right now. And then, and then the others were, you know, just a couple of those other things that, you know, I mentioned with regards to calls that the townspeople make, are they responded to, I had several people tell, one person in particular had made three calls, he's not sure that they came three times, and then he goes, and then the first thing he hears at this last call he made, this is within 10 days, was the young, he could hear the police officer, because he went out on his deck and he's listening to him, and he says, "Well, you know, we got a lot of old folks in this town." So, in other words, the response was more like, gee, guys, I'm so sorry, you know, but we got a lot of old folks who complained, so, you know, don't worry about it, sort of thing, so he was up in arms about that, he was very upset, you know, the man is younger than I am, he's not very young maybe, but he's younger than I am, but he was upset, that, this was the response, the officer, rather than worrying about the noise that was emanating from their place, and, and the fire, and the fire pit after midnight, but, you know, so. I think those are my only comments right now, anybody else?
No, but that same one you're talking about is my neighbor.
Ah.
One of my neighbors, let's put it that way.
Okay.
The one that was complaining about that, I don't blame him.
Diana, can I respond to a couple of those questions?
Please, please.
Couple of things, obviously, being the new chief and sitting down with all of the staff, I've already seen an increase in just 48 hours of the performance of our deputies. I've sat down with them personally, one-on-one, they're excited for change. Chief Sokowski, been here 38 years, served all the towns, you know, very professionally and admirably, I have some new ideas, some things that I'm going to be doing differently. You're going to see an increase in many, many things, from presence to enforcement, just a couple of things, one, I started by restructuring our part-time deputy list. I went in, I reorganized... I went in, I reorganized our entire part-time deputy list, and I brought in experienced, seasoned detectives. I brought in a lieutenant from the Michigan City Police Department who'll be serving the town here part-time, who is now in charge of the Lepore County Narcotics Drug Task Force. So I have those resources. I brought in several detectives that are seasoned detectives that will be working part-time for the Long Beach Police Department as well. I brought in a couple, um, very young, aggressive police officers from other police departments that will be assisting us on a part-time basis as well. And these are employees that will be assisting the five full-time employees that we have here at the Long Beach Police Department. What I did is like building a winning franchise. I went in, I purposely selected staff that I have history with, that I have worked with, that I can trust, and I know that are hard-working, professional, dedicated employees. So I'm building a team here that's going to serve all three of the communities in a very professional way. Um, I'm working on the request, um, that you had made about possibly tracking the amount of miles that we drive within the community monthly. Um, I'm working with our technology that's based in our patrol cars currently to see if I can set up some geo-fencing by putting in your geography and possibly tracking that on our modems in our cars. Um, it's early, but it is something that I am working on. So I hear all of the concerns, um, the concerns that you're sharing about previous calls and that, those are the types of things that, as your chief, I need to hear within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of the occurrence, so I can bring in the officer, I can research the call for service, I can give you some immediate feedback in that. Um, you're gonna see, I'm the type of administrator that doesn't sit long on any mail. Um, the questions you sent to me earlier, within a matter of a few hours, they were answered, and I've been in and out of meetings all day. Um, that's just the way I, I run my office. I run my office just like I run a business. Um, I have twenty-nine years' experience, of that fifteen years in police administration, um, with the Michigan City Police Department. So again, um, I think you're gonna see a lot of changes. Give me time. Like I said, I'm only in day two here, but I can assure you, I want to serve the town of Michiana Shores, and the staff that are here want to continue serving you as well. And we can meet every request that you have. We can enforce your ordinances, we can enforce your laws, we can enforce your traffic infractions. Um, we're going to do it to seek compliance, cooperation. We're not looking to do this as a punitive measure. Law enforcement isn't about punitive. It's about seeking cooperation, collaboration. These are all things that I wanna do with the town. Again, all valid points. I sincerely agree and am very empathetic to you, but allow me the time, and I think, uh, six months from now, we'll be very happy we're ready.
Thank you.
Did you get this recorded?
I'm sorry, Joan?
I said, did you get this recorded?
I didn't tell everybody at the beginning. Our meetings are recorded, so they could be up on, you know, Lepore's.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about. I was just being...
This, this is Mike Lencioni. Mark, I, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, I think that, uh, you know, Bob Sokowski's done a great job for, for Michiana Shores over, over many years. Um, but as you noted in, in, uh, in, uh, what you were sharing there, it's, you know, change is, change is good, and, uh, it breathes, uh, uh, you know, some, some fresh ideas and, 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 uh, you know, additional communication into the mix. And so, uh, I, I appreciate you and, uh, sharing that and the ideas that you brought up. And it all comes down to communication. I think that was gonna be moving, moving forward. And I think that, uh, you know, assuming we move forward, um, that, uh, you know, liaising with the, the entire town council and with the, with the representative, um, uh, from the council to the, to police, uh, uh, force, and then with our code enforcement, uh, I mean, I think we can, can work through any, any, you know, hurdles or, or, uh, improvements, you know, in real time and, and not really bottle them up for, for years. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed, Mark, with your, uh, with, uh, your, your ideas, your plan.
Appreciate it.
Communication you shared and, and I, as, as far as I'm concerned, you know, Rich, Dinah, Michael, I mean, I, I, I just think we should move this forward. I mean, I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, uh, we can, we can vote on it, we can do what we need to do, but I, I don't see the need or necessity to, to hold our weight. Uh, I, 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 I think we know which way we need to go on this.
Yes. Chief?
If I could add just one more comment too, um, as I look at technology as it's related to law enforcement and that, just to help explain the three percent increase on the contracts and that, is that we are seeing increases, very, very high increases on our technology, our in-car cameras, our body cameras, our training, um, ammunition itself for us just to get out on a, a hot range and qualify with our firearms, we're paying much more for ammunition. So the town of Long Beach has seen a lot of increases as well, so they're trying to share that with everybody. So, you know, Dumont's seen a three percent, yours seen the three percent. I could just tell you that technology-wise, we're really seeing a hard hit to our industry when it comes to what's required of us for technology, um, the vehicles we drive, the equipment we put in those, um, the specialized equipment that we have to have as well. So all these things are very, you know, cost, uh, expense-wise in cost, and so hopefully that helps explain some of the increases that you're seeing as well.
Yeah, that's in alignment, Mark, you know, with my business. It's the same, the same issues. You didn't hit on, uh, uh, health insurance either, but that one.
That's true.
Goes up, uh, uh, you know, a lot more than three percent every year, um, so.
And the overtime. The overtime, Mike, that I'll be adding extra officers on, say, a Friday, Saturday night, where we'll have part-time officers, some of those detectives I described coming in and assisting. So we'll have two or more officers working in the town that'll be coming in and out of the three, um, communities and that. So I'm looking at increasing my overtime expenditures moving forward too, because if I'm gonna have an increased presence, I'm gonna have to spend extra overtime on those hot summer nights, but I know I'm gonna see an influx of calls. And so therefore, I'm gonna be asking, um, the town council to increase my overtime budget in the near future as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Rich, maybe, did you wanna say something?
No, I agree with Mike Lencioni. It's probably time to just move on with this.
Yeah. Um, Dinah, I'll say this, the whole purpose of this meeting, the whole purpose of these meetings is to get the understanding of the increase, but also what's involved, the planning, uh, like Lencioni said, uh, you know, we, we, we're under a new, um, not management, but under new supervision for Long Beach. And with, with Mark said in terms of all the things that he's put in place, I could honestly see the warrant for the increase. Uh, I, that's the reason why I wanted to ask those questions and get it out in the open. It sounded like Mark has done his homework in presenting that to the town council. So, um, that's what I was looking to hear. Um, and I'm satisfied as well, um, with the understanding that we have a tight timeline, um, and, you know, change is good sometimes. And, uh, you know, with all due respect to, uh, Chief Sokowski. So I'm okay, uh, with moving forward with the proposed contract now.
Well, um, you are running with this right now, so that, um, you know, I thank you for the work that you did on this, Michael. Thank you very much. And if we are making some kind of suggestion, that means it has to be done as a motion and a second, and then we will have to do a vote if you are ready to do this for tonight. So, um, I need someone to, um, make the first move.
This is Mike Lencioni. I'll move that we go ahead and, uh, agree and approve, uh, the contract from Long Beach Police Department for our own police protection in Michiana Shores, uh, as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Rich Young seconds it. Do you guys hear me?
Yeah, Rich, I can hear you. Dinah, uh, did you hear that?
I think Dinah's frozen.
Yeah, it looks like she's frozen.
Here's your chance, Michael.
So I'll go, uh, Joan, can we make note of this? I'll make note that, uh, Lencioni makes a motion to accept the proposed, uh, Long Beach co-, uh, contract that covers police services for Michiana Shores, and Rich Young seconds.
You gonna take a vote?
Can you? Let me, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
You, you went, you went rogue.
I, I guess so, 'cause you all look like you froze up for me. So anyway, thank you. Um, so we have a mo-, a motion to accept the police contract as presented to us, uh, by the town of Long Beach, and we have a second for this motion. Is there any more discussion at this point from the council members with regards to the motion that has just been made?
No more comments.
Okay. If there are no more comments, then, uh, we'll ask for a vote. This will be a roll call vote, as we did before. I'll call by name, please indicate, uh, by your agreement by saying aye. Uh, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus?
Aye.
Um, it looks like the ayes have it. The police contract has been, um, approved. Um, so I thank you, uh, for this vote. And Chief Swistec, I see you will be our chief going forward now.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. Again, like Michael said, um, communication's going to be our key, so please, email, call, get the information to me, allow us the opportunity to work on, uh, any suggestions or concerns. We look forward to serving the town.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would you, uh, would you like me to stay on for the rest of the meeting? Is there anything else I can help with? I'm totally open. You tell me.
You know, this is up to you if you wanna stay on. We're gonna go on into various reports of various, uh, committees, um, our vouchers, and then we have a few issues that the, uh, town needs to, uh, take a look at. So you're welcome to stay. It's up to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so let's go down now to the clerk treasurer. Please, this is for the vouchers, invoices, claims.
Okay, for the vouchers, for January twenty-twenty-one, Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department for fire protection, three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Rental of the building, a hundred and five dollars. Long Beach Police Protection, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Refuse service of three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. AT&T, AT&T is both for January and February, we're working on something with it, and I'll explain that later, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and six cents. The Indiana League of Municipal Clerk and Treasurer's, a membership, eighty-two dollars. Horizon Bank, thirty-five dollars for the safe deposit box. Department of Water Works, nine forty-nine, water for the garage, nine forty-nine for Kincaid Park. Department, uh, I'm sorry, Brenda Heckman for her travel back and forth from the bank to, I mean, to the bank and post office, forty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Office Depot for, uh, ink and office supplies, two hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Jim McKay, our, uh, computer tech, uh, for some computer upgrades and some fixes, a hundred and five dollars. AIM, which is another membership, uh, the dues for the ADA part of it is twenty-five dollars. Comcast for the, um, January invoice, eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. And Deborah Chubb for reimbursement for BZA, uh, enforcement, uh, letters that she sent out, twenty dollars and eighty-five cents, for a grand total of one thousand, one thousand, thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions on this? If there are no questions, then I need a motion to accept the vouchers as they were presented.
So moved.
Rich Young has moved to accept vouchers. I need a second.
Martinez seconds.
Okay, Michael Martinez second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus?
Aye.
Uh, the vouchers have been accepted, uh, for payment. Thank you. All right, Joan, next?
On the next we have, and believe it or not, I think I gave Rich my payroll one. Uh, we have vouchers for the payroll.
I don't have it.
You don't have it? Uh, then that must be... Well, somebody else has got it. Somebody else wanna read it? I sent it to all of you.
Yes, if you want, I've got it right here. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department?
No, no, that's the voucher. I'm talking about the payroll.
Oh, I have payroll.
Yep, I gave it, I sent it to you.
Oh, here we go. Yes, yes, yes. I see, I see. I've got it right here. Sorry. The other paper. Okay? So you've got payroll, total entry?
I just, I just found it.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, my, my second copy. Okay, for the payroll, the net wages was eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. MVH was, uh, seven hundred and twenty dollars for, um, building department, a hun-, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the, um, employee liability for Medicare, eighteen dollars and thirteen cents, uh, for FICA, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. BZA secretary, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, code enforcement officer, two thousand three hundred and two dollars. Uh, department head for, um, the roads, a hundred and thirty-seven fifty. The department head for the parks, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. BZA president, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Clerk treasurer, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, clerk treasurer for refuse, a hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Employer liability for Medicare, a hundred and eighty dollars and thirty cents. Part-time office, um, one thousand five hundred dollars. Refuge part-time, uh, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Employer, FICA, uh, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seven cents. And general salary for the town board, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, for a grand total of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and two cents. That was for the December payroll.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this? Okay, if there are no questions, then I need someone to move and then to second approval of these payroll vouchers.
So moved.
Okay, Rich Young moved, second?
Martinez seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. Moved and seconded to accept the payroll vouchers. All in favor, favor, please indicate by saying aye. Uh, Mike Lencioni? I can't hear you, Mike. I need an...
Aye.
No. Thank you. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus?
Aye.
Uh, the vouchers have been approved and, uh, for payment. Thank you very much. Joan, let us move to the next section.
No, 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 I'm not through unless you just want me to do the vouchers. I have an ordinance, I mean, a resolution to transfer funds, and I also have a, um, comment or, um, I need you to vote on something with the fire department.
Okay, then, the resolutions, we have a section seven for resolutions, so the transfer of funds probably belongs in this section right here, so please add that.
Okay, well then, let's go on with the other comment that I have. The fire department has approached me with, um, helping them pay for some of their PPE. For all of you who don't know what that means, it means personal protective equipment. They did not get any cares money when it was distributed. I don't know if the county had to do with that or whether it came out of Indiana Department of County. That, I have no idea. That, I have no idea. They have about, well, they have less than what I figured, two thousand dollars of payments that they would like to have reimbursed. I deal, they also told me that we could go ahead and do it, but the council has to approve it. So it's up to the council as to whether we want to allow some of our funds. We got, we received over nine thousand dollars, and we still have eight thousand dollars left, and I don't know what we will be spending it on.
Okay. Joan, can you be more specific about what these expenses were for, for the fire department that they would be claiming the monies for? Because-
Oh, you're not familiar with the per- okay. Uh, they're mainly for masks. Most of it is, uh, their masks are different than what we use, uh, so they're a little more expensive. Uh, they have, uh, shields, the plastic shields. I can't remember what else is involved. It's all, it's all prof- what they call personal protective equipment.
Yes, Joan. I, I understand those. Yes. Michael, did you wanna make a comment, cuz then I'm gonna add-
No, go ahead.
All right. Um, Joan, from the meetings that, um, the, the COVID-nineteen, the county meetings that I've been attending, during these meetings, the, I was assured, when we spoke about potentially needing something for the town, I was told that we could turn to our fire departments because they are being provided with everything that they need. But now, I'm not sure whether that is at-
Oh, no. No, no, no. They didn't get any, they didn't get any, not the volunteer fire department. The town, the towns and cities that have their own fire department, they got a lot because they even had monies to pay for payroll. Anybody that did anything with, um, COVID as far as meetings, notifying residents, you know, of what's involved, they got a lot of money.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I, I-
But the volunteer fire departments in Port County received zero.
Okay.
Okay. I gotta que- I have a question.
Go ahead, Michael. Mike?
Okay. I, I'm not adverse to this, but if, I mean, the, 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 the volunteer fire department serves it, serves a lot more than Michiana Shores. So have, have they made the same request of Grand Beach?
I have no idea.
Well, so-
Grand Beach is not, uh, Grand Beach is not in-
Not the Village of Michiana then, Joan. It's the same thing, or Brooklyn Beach. It's the same. Uh, what, so I, I, I'm not prepared to, to, I would wanna know who else they've, I mean, before we commit, I'd like to know who else, uh, of the other communities that, that are served by, by the department, what other requests and what other donations have been made before we can commit to using our scarcity of resources. I'm not adverse to it at all, but I wanna know who else has contributed.
All this money you just spent.
Joan, that has no bearing whatsoever on-
Wait a minute. Look, you know, if you don't wanna do it, then don't do it.
That is not what I said. That is not what I said.
Yes. Joan, please move on.
I want to know what other-
Okay. You call them and contact them, because I can't do anything tonight to find out.
Joan-
I gave this to you earlier.
Joan, this was given to us, yes, within the last twenty-four hours, so thank you for that information. All right?
Okay.
I agree. Okay. So that, it is, we got, it was not quite clear, okay?
Okay.
As this is going on with regards to, wait, wait, wait. Joan, please let me finish. So that we heard a comment, you know, from Michael, uh, from Mike. Um, Michael tried speaking before. I wanna see what Michael is gonna be saying as well. And is this something that needs to be settled tonight? Or is this something that we can actually arrange to be able to do on another day? Whether it's, we do this at the beginning of-
You mean another month, because you aren't meeting for another month?
That's right. Unless we have, need to have some other kinda meeting where we can actually bring this up too. But nonetheless, if, if it's a burning issue for tonight, then perhaps we can find out, just out of curiosity, as Michael suggested. Now, Michael Martinez, did you wanna make a comment? Or Rich may, may wanna make a comment as well yet. Please, go ahead. Michael?
Yeah. No, you, you had, uh, kind of, uh, answered the, the, uh, raise the same question as I. Is this something that has to be done tonight? I, I do agree that, you know, just with everything, the pandemic, that they haven't had their pancake breakfast, that they haven't had their fundraisers, that a lot of volunteers rely on. So every volunteer is, okay, I get that. Um, you know, and I know they back up Long Beach, which I'm a member of, so they do work for their volunteer service. But I will say that Mike has a valid point, just to ensure, is that, are they asking, cuz I know they covered Beulah Beach and everything up until Long Beach. So, you know, are they asking for a total of, just using, using the sample, for a total of four thousand dollars? So two thousand from Beulah Beach and two thousand from Michiana Shores? Or is it just two thousand from Michiana Shores, when we should be kinda cutting the cost or spreading the cost with Beulah Beach, who I know that they cover now too? That's kind of what we're looking at, uh, Joan. We're not saying no, but we're just gonna leave it more background on it, okay? Cuz I do respect everything that they do, and I understand the circumstances that they're in.
Enough, enough. Just decide whether you want me to find out more than just go ahead and table it. I don't need a three-hour discussion on this. I'm facing, nothing is going to happen. I can see that. So why are we beating a dead horse? If you decide you want me to check more information on it, I will check and find out. And if it takes us till next month and we can't do anything about it next month, then the fire department will just have to eat it.
Thank you, Joan, for your comment.
That's what we're asking for.
But this is the time for the council to discuss, which is why we were discussing it. Thank you. Rich, did you still wanna say something, cuz your, your signal keeps coming on?
My signal what?
It looks like you're trying to say something, so I'm asking if you wanted to make a comment.
No, enough is enough. We've already, I agree with Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you. And in that case, Joan, that perhaps one of us, even I, can give a call to both of those other communities to find out what they're doing to help out with the fire department. I have no problem with doing that.
Why don't you just contact the fire department?
That might be a good idea as well. Thank you. So we will table this then to make a final decision on it. Or, or do I have another suggestion from one of my, uh, council members? Please. You wanna table this, or do you want us to agree to doing this now, but that we also find out from the others what they're doing? That's also an option.
I suggest we table it, find out what the adjacent communities that are served are doing. And then, you know, I, maybe before you give somebody some money, I mean, and I, again, I'm not adverse to it at all, it'd be kinda good to know what the total expenditure was and-
We've heard that.
The resources are pulling together and what the reimbursement is and, you know, act accordingly.
Okay. All right.
I make a motion, you table it.
Well, Michael Lencioni already made a motion to table it, so-
I didn't hear it that way.
Do I have a second?
Martinez, second.
Okay. Michael Martinez, seconds. It has been moved and decided to table this particular topic to make a final decision on it at the next meeting, which will take place February ninth. Thank you very much. In the meantime, we will get some, uh, some-
We don't have to vote on that?
Uh, to table it, I don't believe so.
No.
No. We've tabled it. We didn't make a final decision. Thank you. All right. Joan, let's move into the, uh, you have the transfer funds, and then we'll move into the next section of the resolution.
What we have, if you're ready for me, it's a resolution twenty twenty dash ten, where certain emergencies have developed since the adoption of the twenty twenty budget, so that it is now necessary to transfer money. Be it resolved by the town council of Michiana Shore or Support County, Indiana, that the expenses of said town, the following transfers be allowed. General fund for code enforcement officer, twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, BZA secretary, a thousand dollars. Lease pickup, contract fees, thirty thousand dollars. Section two, whereas it has been shown that certain existing appropriations now have an on- obligated balance, which will be, which will not be needed for the purpose which appropriated. It is further ordained that the following transfers reduce the following. See it. These all come out of CDIT. Lease pickup, thirty thousand. General, uh, fund for the code enforcement officer, twenty-five hundred dollars, for the BZA secretary, a thousand dollars. Can be adopted today. Um, it probably should have been done December thirty-first, which I mentioned to you at the December month, I mean, December twenty-ninth meeting, which all of you, so, by the town council of Michiana Shores.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any question? I'm sorry.
Lease pickup, we had to put in thirty thousand dollars because nothing was collected before we got the bill. So we have to have money in there to start it.
Okay. We understood. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from among the council members?
I have none.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then I need to have a motion to approve the resolution as presented, resolution twenty twenty dash ten, to transfer funds.
So moved.
Okay. Rich Young moves. I need someone to second.
Lencioni with the second.
Mike Lencioni, seconds. The motion to transfer, uh, funds according to resolution number twenty twenty dash ten. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Uh, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Diana Dumbrus, aye. Uh, the motion has carried to approve, to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash ten, uh, transferring funds from, uh, uh, in order to be able to, uh, cover the expenses listed in the resolution. Thank you to all. Okay. Joan, I will stop by in the morning to sign mine or tomorrow during the day. Um, okay. Let us move on. Joan, I think yours are done now, correct?
I'm done.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Let's move on now to appointments to boards and commissions, uh, liaison positions reaffirmed. Um, I have a list put together here, which I will ju- just present to you, and then, uh, perhaps some we will approve today, some we may put off until, um, another time. Um, we must, uh, again, make an appointment for the following, uh, people. We must appoint the road commissioner, the floodplain administrator. We must, uh, uh, what's it called? We actually need to have a water commissioner or in place of just a commissioner, because they don't really have anything to do for us. We don't have a water system here, but we will need to ask someone to be a liaison. So let's first go. Um, Ray Dumbrus has agreed to remain the floodplain administrator in this coming year of twenty twenty-one. Um, I don't know whether you wanna vote for all of these at once, uh, once I name them, or do you wanna do them one at a time?
All at once.
All at once.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, Bob Solkowski indicated at the December twenty-ninth meeting that he would like to remain as our towns road commissioner. Um, Steve Thomas is currently still our building commissioner. The contract last year, or the agreement last year, said it will all be dependent upon when we do a review, which we have not, you know, done as of this point yet. I think of the same thing will be done for the road commissioner, uh, with regards to some of the things that they do. Um, and if needed, you could even do this for the floodplain administrator, although I think things have been pretty quiet and that, they're just heating up right now with one issue. Um, we do not need to approve, uh, anybody or appoint anybody, as far as I know, to the BZA right now, but I could not get an answer from Matt or the BZA. Joan, you might be able to help us out on that one, in case you remember offhand. And if we can't do it today, we will do them in February.
You'll have to do them in February, because I did not pull my records. You still have not come in and, and gone over the BZA with me, like you said you were going to last year.
Yeah. So we'll have to do that. Okay. So we have to make that a priority then. Thank you. All right. The plant commission, um, I reviewed all of those, and nobody needs to be appointed to the plant commission as this year. Uh, we have three members who are on, uh, to the end, no, two members are on to the end of this year. Uh, that's Howard Jablon and Matt Bowen, and then we have four other members who are on, five other members that are on until two, at the end of two thousand twenty-three. So we're good for the plant commission. Uh, the only, uh, board that does need to have somebody, uh, replaced on the board is the park board. Last year, um, uh, Jean Poulard was appointed for one year. Jean Poulard took over my position, and my position ended as December of this, this past year, so we have a new position, in other words, for the park board. Um, last year, we did appoint, uh, Jean Poulard, because Dolly had brought him to the meeting and suggested that we do that, but we do have, uh, nominees for the park board position. As a matter of fact, I think the nominees, um, we have to change anyway, because according to the park board rules, it says you can have only two Republicans and two Democrats, and right now we have three Republicans and one Democrat.
I beg your pardon. There's an ordinance that eliminated that.
Oh, okay. Well, then even if that was eliminated, that's okay.
I think that was eliminated when they did the plant commission, that they don't have to have affiliation.
Okay. Thank you for that information. I will look at that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if, regardless of that, Jean Poulard was on for one year. Okay? And we have nominations now that I suggest we add to this. Uh, we put on this board Gene Paxton as a voting member on the park board. So that is my nomination. Uh, if there are any others, please let me know for any of these other positions as well, right now. So any council members have any comments to make?
Wasn't Gene Paxton on it before, and she quit?
She was not, she was never officially made a, a council member. I mean, a park board member, because at the time, Dolly was a member, Brenda was a member, I was a member, uh, on that board. And, uh, but we did not have that fourth voting member. She joined us to help work with the committee, and she worked and helped on the booster club, but she'd never given her oath or anything for, were signed up to do, um, to do that and, as I look through our minutes. So she did not quit.
Has anybody checked with Jean Poulard, see if he wanted to be on it again?
Uh, I tried reaching him. I left him a message, and John has not called me back.
I just talked to him before the meeting.
Well, and what did he say?
I didn't ask him about that.
All right.
I didn't.
Well, I think we had to find out before we vote him out.
That's a, well, he's not voted out, Rich. His, his one year ended because he took my spot. So he would have, he has an opportunity to perhaps be nominated for it or not, or appointed from us, not nominated. So he could be nominated.
Well, you, you've left the others in that wanted to be in, and you're gonna deny him?
No, I'm not denying him. He did not respond to my question about this, is what happened. Okay? So I'm sorry. Michael, what did you say? Or is that Michael or Mike?
Mike, there's only one open spot.
Well, I understand that, but that's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring, she asked Ray if he wanted to stay. He asked Bob Solkowski, said he wanted to. The building commissioner is going to stay, and then when you go down here, then all of a sudden, we're going to tell Jean, we aren't gonna get, even ask him? He may not even want it, but I think you should have the-
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, and I don't have any problem with making an appointment I understand what you're saying and I don't have any problem with making an appointment in February.
Very good.
Okay, I have no problem with doing that, which is what I mentioned as I started. This, the whole section about the appointments.
Okay, because you don't vote on.
So, right now, we can agree unless there is another nominee who wants to come in for any of those other positions, building commissioner, road commissioner, or floodplain administrator.
So you're, you're holding all of these open?
No, I just said, we have, these are positions that need to be reappointed. People have agreed to stay on in those positions.
So you still have to vote on them, right?
We still have, we are appointing them, yes. So now, because the town council appoints them, is what I'm asking the town council to do. So I need to have a motion from one of the town council members to make the appointments.
I move that Ray be reappointed, Bob be reappointed. I don't know about Steve, he's never here.
Steve, Steve is on our call now, he's listening. So.
Is he?
Yes, he is. And we said we have to do reviews, that we're going to be doing a review of the road commissioners as well, so you know.
All right, well, based on that then.
I'm sorry?
If they're going to be reviewed and possibly somebody else giving the job after the review, then I will move that we renominate these people until they're reviewed.
Okay, very good, thank you. Do I have a second?
Lanceoni, I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Seconded, I need an approval now, indicated by saying aye. Mike Lanceoni?
Aye.
Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. Okay, let us move on then to the next section and that would be the various reports. I did not, chief, we didn't see, I didn't see anything from you with, or from the department with regards to a report. Bob Silkowski also did not submit anything at the end of the month.
Yes, and I apologize for that because I am just learning their new systems and Sergeant Schooly and I are working on those. So I'll have those off to you here probably in the next few days to a week.
Okay, thank you, that's fine. Prior chief Bendix did submit a report and I will share that with everybody that, that is on our call now. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas, is there something you would like to say?
Yeah, we had three permits issued since the last board meeting. There was one on number six poncha train, it was a garage roof, JB West did the work. Thirty-six twenty-three poncha train, there was electrical work that KB Electric did in the basement. And number nine palhatten, Anisha went in and replaced furnace and air conditioning.
Okay. All right. Anything else on your part, Steve?
No, nothing.
No? All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, Dolly's not here, so we don't have a park board. There's nothing really to report, I don't think, since it's winter. The road commissioner gave us, I don't even know if he, can't remember if he gave us any kind of a report at the twenty, meeting of the twenty-ninth. I think he only presented trees.
You didn't do reports on the twenty-ninth.
Pardon?
You didn't do any reports on the twenty-ninth.
No, but I'm just saying, the road commissioner actually did present about the trees on the twenty-ninth.
Yes, that's right, he did.
He did report on the trees and, and that was it.
I know one of them's been taken down.
Oh, it has been? Okay, excellent. Good, thank you. There was no advised, there was no plan commission meeting, so there's nothing to report for the plan commission. Gene Paxton sent out a notice today saying that the BZA is going to be having a meeting on the twenty-first of January. And this is just, you know, one of their regular business meetings. Deborah Schaub is with us today, so Deb, is there anything that you would like to report to the town?
Sure, so I sent over to you, you know, my updated spreadsheet. Oh, I'm sorry. Just, I'm, just been going back and forth with several of the homeowners. We had a couple that were claiming exemption as full-time residents. So we've been working on, you know, what that really means and how to interpret that. And so I think we've come to, you know, kind of a reasonable, you know, conclusion on that. And so I'll put that together and send it out again. And I thanked Laura for her assistance on that. And one of those people who had claimed an exemption ultimately just decided to apply for the permit. So, so working with that homeowner as well as several others who I've notified and who are in the process. And also helped them, I'm trying to develop like a little, you know, another form for them to get through the BZA process. I know there's an application for the permit and so, and, you know, but they, they seem, everyone just seems confused. So I'm trying to, you know, help people get through that. And also finding out new homeowners, so I will send them a letter just to give them notice that, you know, because there has been, there have been so many home sales here and so many new homeowners, just to let them know that if they want to use their home as a short-term rental, they'll have to get a permit.
Okay.
And then one other little issue, there's, you know, most people who have pools here have fences around them and it always occurred to me that that was, that would be in the code. And maybe Steve, is he still on? Oh, it doesn't look like he's on anymore.
Hey, Deborah, I can go ahead and, I can go ahead and address that. That's in a, that's in an ordinance change that's actually currently in work, but I just submitted a draft on.
Oh, terrific, yeah, because the code now doesn't really address, you know, private pools. It refers to.
We covered that in the, in the new draft.
Excellent, okay, oh, that's great. Is there, there just is one homeowner that, that I see that has a pool and it's not enclosed.
Hey, Deb, this is Laura. I did send some information to Dinah as well. Dinah, was that what, ten days ago or so? Remember, you had asked me about how it was taken out of the administrative code. Would you kindly pass that on to Deb? I thought I copied her on it, but apparently not. Yeah, I think we'll find that very helpful.
Okay, very good.
All right, great, that's all I have, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Did anybody have questions, Deb? Nope? Okay. All right, Samantha Arnold obviously wasn't able to join us right now, but there were some kind of issues that were taking place with the website. She was finally able to load our, the invite to the meeting information and the meeting is taking place. There was no way the website was accepting the agenda to be added. And there were, we were having a problem. She and I were both trying to open up various documents, upload and, and see what's working. And there was some kind of an issue. I don't know what it is that's taking place. So if she were here, she may have asked you these questions, but I will ask it now in the meantime. If these kind of issues keep persisting, I think we need to look for a new host, you know, server host for our website. We can't stay with the same ones if we're down, because as a town, if we are relying on this, we're passing information, which has become the practice for us now and pretty much overall for everybody, that we need to have a website that's actually, you know, working all the time for us. So, so I think that my suggestion would be is to allow her to do some research for us with regards to that. So I don't know what other kind of thoughts anybody else might have on it, but please make sure you say something now.
Were they able to get the meeting minutes on it?
No, nope. And the ones that are there are not even open, okay? It's not allowing us, there were issues first, if you, you know, I'm not quite sure how much, yeah, you're aware of it or not, but at first people weren't even able to access the website, many people. I was able to access it the whole time and then when it came up for everybody else, I lost it. I couldn't get it, get. So, and in the meantime, documents have been very much garbled or mixed up or they're missing. I don't know what, what the issue is. Now Samantha's handling all of this with John at that Business Yeti, which is the name of their company now, not JM Two, but Business Yeti. So anyway, she's been dealing with him on that, but you know, this thought came to me that if this keeps going on, we may need to look into using someone else rather than them. So. Any comments? Any, nothing? Or should we just, can I just tell her it's okay to start looking to get information?
Do we have to have a host? Can somebody do it?
Samantha's handling the work for us, but we need, the website has to go out on a server of some kind, Joan.
Oh, it does? Okay, I'm, I'm not familiar, I'm just asking.
Yes, we have to do something, you know, okay? Like as a teacher, I would use Google, but all the schools were using Google, so that was fine. But I, this is not something that I would put out on Google for us right now. You know, I, I wouldn't even want to take the responsibility, but I would want Samantha to look into it then, if she's willing to do that for us right now. Because if we persist in having problems with this, then, you know, we're having trouble. And we do have to comply, then if we are using the website to give information out, then that means we have to make sure that it's doing it in a fairly, you know, consistent manner, so.
I told you we had GoDaddy, didn't I?
Yes, you mentioned that, yes.
Okay, so you might mention that to Samantha.
Well, the, the, the name, the domain name belongs to us no matter what. We could just go somewhere else and use it, so, but yes, thank you. Okay. For NERC, nothing has taken place now. A meeting will be January twenty-first, so then I can report out to what took place there. Laporte County COVID meetings take place on Thursdays. Last week's meeting was very much on the rise in the various, in the cases that are taking place all over in Indiana and that Indiana having been in red or brought up to red. And the huge, huge issue right now is vaccines. And as soon as information is provided, they will send that to us and we will share it with everyone as to being able to get their COVID vaccines.
They opened it up for eighties, you know, don't you?
Yes, but that's, you know, and you're still going to be notified by either your physician or somebody or to be able to go in there. You can't get any vaccines without appointments. No one could just show up anywhere, appointments will have to be made.
But there's a website and a phone number, do you have that?
Yes, I have that number, yes. But I'm, I was thinking in general of everybody else who's not eighty, who's under eighty still, you know, and, and how they're going to present this. So that's a general information and as they do present more info, we will post that, but it is on the Laporte County website for vaccination. So then the drainage board had nothing to do with us today at all, so nothing to report from them. Okay, I would like us to move into the unfinished business. I listed several things that we had not done from earlier and I would like you to take a quick look at these to see about how we are going to approach this and if and when and what are we going to do? Because we never set anything up. Setting a timeline for resident compliance with short-term rental registration and permitting, having the process completed between January first and April first of two thousand twenty-one was the suggested date. B would be setting a timeline for the completion of a petition for special use variances from the BZA, meaning if somebody gets one started, they should get it done within a certain amount of time before they have to start their whole process all over again.
Let me interrupt you a minute. The BZA has timelines set for someone who has applied. Matt's not here, but I can explain. People do not get all the information in and a timeline doesn't start until they get all their information in. That's been because there's been a lot of confusion. People think all they have to do is get a special use permit. And I know Deb's run into this, we have run into it. The checks come in with the information, the form, it's a permit form, it's on the internet. They take that off and they send it in, not realizing they have to go through the special use with the BZA before they can apply for the permit. So I think once this gets all straightened out, then the BZA takes over. Once they get all the information, the BZA has timelines that they have set already, that these have to be done within so many days that they have to, so many days of having the total information, they, the BZA has to act on it and set an appointment and, and do the BZA hearing.
Thank you, thank you, Joan.
That's already set in there, we can't change that. That's a BZA regulation.
Thank you, thank you. That's, but the question that had come up, and it did come up from the BZA, asking me about that, if we could set a timeline for somebody who initiates getting their paper ready.
That's already done.
And stops it and keeps saying that they're going to do it, going to do it, and they do not do it. This is the kind of a timeline that had been asked of me. So for instance, if we have the Smiths who came in to request the special use, you know, permit and they started this in September, but here it is January and they only started filling out a form and did not finish, how much time are they given to finish that paperwork? Was the question presented to me. And the question asked was, could the town put a time limit? I wasn't sure and I said perhaps that time limit should be indicated by the BZA itself with regards to how much time. You will allow someone to get their paperwork together. So that was one, that's one issue and they're both part of that bigger issue, which is a short-term rental. So I know that Deb was working on some, you know, letters that could present maybe in forms this and make it perhaps a clearer matter. And perhaps we will need to do a special mailing again, an email and a mailing of this information so that we could get, once everything is straightened out, maybe we could get something out to all the residents of the town to make sure. Still need to give some kind of a deadline that you have to have your permits. They've got to at least begin them by a certain time. Otherwise, I understand new people who are coming in is different, but those who have been here the entire time and have done nothing. So any comments, please, on these two points?
I would just say that, you know, they can take as long as they want, but they can't rent it until they get the permit. I mean, that's really the incentive for them, is to get it completed so they can rent it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Deb.
So, I mean, it doesn't matter to me how long they take, you know, if they, if, you know, if they're, you know, half the application lingers in the file, you know, so what? I mean, they don't, they won't be considered until it's all completed. And they can't rent it until it's all, you know, until it's approved.
Okay, and hopefully we can start charging for every infraction.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
When they do that. Any other comments from my council, council members? Nope, nobody's making any comments. Okay, thank you for that, but you, I like those letters that you were putting together. So I, I, that's my suggestion is that I think we're going to have to send out, you know, a letter to every single resident of the town that actually indicates all of this with a clear explanation in the forms. I think that would be very helpful then. And then we will post those new ones as soon as we can post them, you know, in a, in a good manner on the website. So those were two points that I had brought up here. Now, the third is with regards to notifying the town residents about their responsibility. I know I brought it up last month, but I think we need to make a real notification of this so people would be aware of it. But I just don't, you know, how, you know, should we just post this again on the website? Should we send an email with all, with this listed, you know, to let them know about the public safety with regards to trees? Any comments, please?
I think we need to have something sent out in a special letter from the council explaining this, whether it goes in, because we aren't going to be sending out anything for utilities until, again, in May.
Okay.
But we need something also that has clearance on the corners. And there's a special, we probably can get that from our new police chief. Keeping the corner right-of-way if we have to draw a diagram or whatever. That's what we did back in two thousand and six or seven.
Right.
And notified everybody. We didn't just hit one person or two people. We sent it out throughout the whole town. Some people was really good and honored it and kept it cleared. We have overhanging bushes, overhanging on the roadway, the actual paved roadway.
Okay, so that's, it's a good suggestion to, I, I think people need to be notified, but perhaps that should come out as a totally separate letter from everything else.
Yeah, you can do it that way.
Return rentals, okay.
Well, you probably do sending something as far as the lease, maybe we can do it together. For the lease pickup in March or April?
Yes, we are, you're right. We're going to be reminding people about it, so, okay.
No, I disagree. I don't want to waste posting, you know, the cost for the additional letter. If we could just combine it with one that we're going to be sending out.
Dinah? Yes?
Laura, just one point, and I think I raised this at the last month's meeting. Just let's be clear that we say public way instead of public right-of-way, because some people think public right-of-way, well, you're ten feet off the road. But the ordinance specifically does read public way, which means they're responsible up to the street roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Et cetera, et cetera. And I don't want there to be any confusion with that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's a good point, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll target that for probably in March because the leave pickup, I think, is supposed to be in April, Michael? Do you remember? But we can work on it, okay. I'm just going to make a note that we're going to.
I'm sorry, I was on you. Remember, those have not been determined yet, so.
Okay, all right, fine. So well, that will be something that we can.
I'll make a note of it.
Okay, for both of those, thank you very much. And Deb, you don't mind continuing working on putting together a good document for the short-term rental and the, you know, the processes to follow?
Absolutely, yeah, happy to do that. Yeah, I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay, very good, thank you so much, okay. So that will be very good. And then the last thing that I have listed under unfinished business, and it's something that I brought. And then the last thing that I have listed under unfinished business, and it's something that I brought up before, but it is something that we should actually do, is, um, we have an ordinance already, and it's twenty twenty, I mean, twenty ten dash oh-three, which requires approval for large expenditures. I'm not sure that our, um, commissioners of any kind, for instance, well, the biggest one who comes to mind is actually the road commissioner, who has incurred some very large bills, about checking to make sure. And as a matter of fact, um, when I spoke with the company that actually took the tree down, he just, oh, I, it was just a, so when he said to get it off the road, I took it all off, so there was sort of a lack of communication there. But we ended up having to pay for it, we will hope to recover some of that money now. But that is a problem, so, um, I think that we need to do something with enforcing this or perhaps setting limits as to how much money can be spent by any individual. We, the park board, you know, um, uh, set that up already, that, well, park board member can't go out and do something without approval from the park board if it is over, I believe, a hundred dollars. Am I right, Joan, I think?
I don't know exactly what amount it is, but it's not, it's, uh, pretty low that you can go out and just spend it, because, um, they have quite a limited budget, yeah.
Hundred or something, I thought, but I, maybe it's even less, I don't know. But I mean, with regards to this other, I think that what we really should do is have some kind of a limit set that you can't spend it without checking, without, with either the clerk treasurer or whatever alternate person we add, because we should have someone in addition to the clerk treasurer to give an approval just in case the clerk treasurer cannot be reached at that particular time. And let's say it is an emergency, we need to do something, so a call could be made. So I think that's an issue that we have to address. Would you like to handle this right now? Councilmen?
No.
No, I think you need to, we need to get something set up besides what's on there. Um, they're, technically what they're saying in this ordinance is that the clerk treasurer, whoever they may be, is the, uh, purchasing agent, and things have to go through the purchasing agent.
Okay, which makes sense, yes.
That's basically what it says. I don't know if there's any, I can't remember, I don't have the ordinance on hand, but I don't remember it having any dollar amount.
No, I don't remember seeing that.
But we have a budget that has so much money set aside. Every one of you has the appropriations. I have so many negative balances on that thing, it's unbelievable. This year we have spent like we didn't know what was going on with a budget.
Well, things changed, and some things had to be, unfortunately, you know, had to be done like that. And, uh, but with regards to this, working on this, then, okay, then we need to put together some kind of a, a document and get it ready, um, if Laura or you will help me work on it, I'll get that ready for next month. Um, because we should include something, because I was, um, again, I'll have to, I'll just have to quote, because it was our road commissioner who said it, he goes, well, you got the budget, so why can't you pay? This had to do with the tree that fell down across Michiana Drive. And I explained, I said, that's okay, we could pay to have it moved off the road, but we shouldn't pay to have it cleaned off for the residents, because we can't do that for every resident, and our budget is not that big, so anyway.
He doesn't do that for the residents in the, in the inter-proper of the town. He only pushes it off the road onto the property from where the tree fell. So why he ordered it for Michiana Drive, I have no idea.
Okay, well, this in the Michiana Drive one, though, could also be Denny's tree service, because Denny told me that he assumed that he wanted it all cleaned off, so I-
That's right, but why?
I have a bit of a doubt on that, because that's what this Denny said. However, but going forward, let's get it set, so it doesn't take places again, okay?
That's, I agree.
Okay, so now, um, so those are things I would like us to, you know, work on, it's unfinished business and things to still address. Um, I have nothing under new business unless someone else has something to bring up. Not hearing anything, okay? Laura, do you have an attorney report for us of any kind?
No, I've covered everything, thank you, Dinah.
Thank you very much. Any other-
Did you want to cover the cell phone?
Oh.
Well, it's not a resolution, Joan, so it's, it's simply a policy. I sent that to you and Dinah.
Okay.
Dinah seemed very happy with it, Joan, if you want to take a careful look at it, see if there's anything. I highlighted a couple things in yellow just to make certain it fit with your schedule with regards to paying for the stipend. Um, but if it meets with your approval, then PDF it and go, it's good.
Okay. I will share this with any of the council members. Laura, I think you sent this to me this afternoon, right? We got that?
That's correct.
Yes, I will share it with everybody else, you know, so you can see what that is. And it's just a doc, it's not a, it's, this is not a ordinance resolution, so we'll be-
No, it's just an internal policy, that's all it is.
Okay.
Let me go back a step.
Sure.
I am getting a cell phone from AT&amp;T. If we get the service from AT&amp;T, then part of that service will be the allotment that goes on the payroll for Deb.
No, again, um, as, as we discussed yesterday, if you give somebody a stipend, they pick the service provider, they provide you the number, and they pay the bill. All you do is write them a check for the stipend that you agreed upon, which was reflected in the salary ordinance.
Okay, then that salary ordinance will probably have to be amended, because the town is going to be paying it initially. Because it's going to be on the AT&amp;T bill. Deb did not want to buy her own phone, so in order to provide her a phone, somebody has to buy it. I've taken the liberty to contact AT&amp;T, and AT&amp;T has stated they can, we can get a phone for, I believe it's forty-five dollars with a five-dollar extra for the phone per month.
None of that real, okay, that, that's good information to have, but it doesn't help. We, we set the salary ordinance up that we're giving a stipend. So you, you don't want to give the stipend to an employee and then have the town pay the bill.
Okay.
So, as we discussed the other day, Joan, the whole purpose was so that it would be less for the town.
It would.
Deb could buy her own provider.
So who's gonna buy the phone? Every phone you buy with a contract.
I, I understand.
Has to have, they have to have a service with it. So we can't have one person buy the phone and another person provide the service. So how do we do?
You're not going to, you're going to give a stipend to an employee who, who qualifies for a phone. They pick their own provider, they use their own phone. That's, that's the way that I set it up. If that's not the way you want it, then the policy that I sent to you is not going to work.
No, it won't, because Deb did not want, well, I, it can work if we do either or. Deb does not want to buy a phone. She wants a separate phone, she doesn't want to buy it. Now, she definitely needs a phone for this code enforcement.
Nobody's disputing that.
Okay, so now somebody tell me how someone can buy the phone and another person pay for it. Because if I get it through AT&amp;T, the town is paying for it. We're paying for the phone and we're paying for the service.
This is, this circles back to the previous conversation. If you do it that way, then you have to be concerned about the wear and tear on the phone and any damage to the phone, that's-
I agree with you, a hundred percent.
I'm, I'm going to cut this, you know what? We can finish this off with the phone as a separate issue. We've already approved a stipend, so we just have to figure out getting the phone. So let's just do that, that can even be done on the side with regards to getting the phone. We don't have to decide that during this meeting right now.
Exactly.
So, um, I would like to move that over, so let's, let's just get that out of the way. We'll worry about that one, we can take care of that tomorrow afternoon, not right now.
No, we can't, I'm gonna be busy this af- tomorrow afternoon.
Well, then I can discuss it with Deb tomorrow afternoon and then give, uh, give her a-
Whatever.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Whatever.
Okay, now communications received, Joan received some communications, which I will share with you regarding lease pickup. There were people who had made comments as well. I received, there were messages left for me, and I spoke with, uh, several individuals, a Mr. Ransom and a Mr. Donahue with regards to the, uh, lease pickup. And Mr. Ransom, I believe, I don't want to, okay, I don't want him to speak now, I think I wrote this information down. Whoops, I'm sorry. What is that? That is my macaw who's tired and wants to go to bed. I have to put her, I have to cover her off, but I couldn't take a break right now, I should have covered it earlier. Uh, I'm sorry, okay, we are gonna be done in just a moment here, okay? So, anyway, Mr. Ransom and Mr. Donahue, and, um, one of them was concerned about the additional fee that we charged, and I was explaining to him, and then the three fifty, and then the other gentleman informed me that he was not going to, uh, pay his bill as a protest. And I said, that is fine, I said, you will be billed again with, um, with, um, you know, with the late fee the next time around. And, and going forward, and I said, because we were giving no, um, everybody was saying this, this is a town-wide thing. So those were my explanations. Joan, presented several words. Okay, we're gonna be, we'll be done in any minute. Any comments from public or council?
I can't believe this.
Any, which part, you can't believe them a clown? Okay, believe me, that's how she is. Anyway, so any other comments from anyone? If there are no other comments, I will ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll move, Martina.
Thank you.
Hey, you beat me too.
All right, thank you very much. It has been moved and seconded that we are calling an end to our meeting, I think you also-
Wonderful.
What's happening?
New meetings were added on the agenda, and I'll be talking to everybody soon. Thank you so much for being here.
Call me, Dana. What about the phone, I'll be glad to help. Deb, you need anything, just holler, thanks, folks, always a pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Good night.